Tell me what the, what the process is for. Moving. See, I tried to send my emails.
Oh, I'll write it down. It's a, it's a website.
Court case? Is there a court case going on? It'll be their.
Yeah, it's our real issue.
There's one court case.
There's one court case.
Yeah.
Did you look at, did you look at your agenda for, did you look at your agenda for your last question?
Yeah, in first summer, it's so many questions.
Oh, we did take it off.
Okay. It would be premature until the appointment.
Does that matter?
Probably not. Unless, unless you look at it just now.
I'll ask Maria.
Maria had, when I looked, before I looked up, when it came up, I looked on, online and changed.
Thank you. I thought it was all Margaret Albertson. There's the signs too?
Yeah, you can use their signs.
Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Sheriff's City Council Regular Work Session for February twenty eighth, two thousand eighteen, February twenty eighth, twenty, twenty sixth, two thousand nineteen. Now, call the, call the meeting to order. We have a number of items on the agenda for discussion tonight. The first one, of course, will be item A, which is the council meeting agenda items. So, we'll start, obviously, we'll call the order, call the meeting to order, roll call, do the invocation, the pledge, acceptance of the agenda, the city manager's report, and then the consent agenda. It consists of two items. One is the regular council meeting minutes for February fourteenth. Has everybody had a chance to look at those? Any additions, corrections, et cetera?
Okay, I had a couple of notes on that. Hold on. I looked at a couple of things really quick. I know a, a new, on the old business, item two on the minutes, which was our thing. I just wanted, on Councilmember Wolf's abstention, I don't know if that was properly noted, the reason for your abstention? Like, it says that it was, I don't know, it says your biz, your property is in there, it should be your business is located in there. There's something.
Same difference to me.
Well, Jill, what's the proper phraseology?
Generally, we do not note why. We just note that it happens. There's no requirement to document why.
Yeah, just that they were, she was abstaining.
Okay, so it didn't matter. Okay. And then, just on my own comments, notes about my own comments, it said Sisters Association. It was the sister cities, just a little typo.
Get that, Maria? Okay, anything else on the, on the minutes?
I don't have it in front of me, but there was a, a comment about the cafe, the RFP for the cafe at the library, and I was a little confused by the dates. It had a date for, for the RFP when it needed to be done, and then it had, anyway, need to go back and look at it, because one day, it's, both dates were, were March, but...
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Calhoun, I think you might be referring to the date of the, the meeting for the folks who are submitting their proposals, and that's why there would be two dates in March.
They were both March, so...
We can check and clarify for you if you'd like.
It looked like they were meeting after the RFP. Isn't, wasn't that the meeting before they respond to the RFP?
Let us go back and check for you.
And I, I, don't have it in front of me.
Okay, anything else on the minutes? Uh, the next item, the next consent agenda item is appointment of two members to the West End Commission. Any comments? Okay. Then we have a couple of public hearing items. Item number three is a development code for architectural standards, and I believe Mr. McLaughlin, or, excuse me, Mr. Pregler.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Educate today.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. Rather than provide you a, a, a written presentation, I thought I'd provide you a PowerPoint, which does provide pictures and visuals of, of some of the recommendations that will be presented to you in these amendments. So, start off with here, let's talk about the purpose of design review in general. You know, the image and character of the built environment are important components of economic development, and aesthetically, visually pleasing development encourages increased investment, provides a sense of community pride. So, there's definitely, design review and architectural design is really a tool of economic Let's go over the brief history of architectural design review in the city. Back in two thousand and two, the Downtown Neighborhood Commission, now called the West End Commission, adopted architectural guidelines for new commercial development on the West End. Now, compliance with these guidelines was voluntary. There was no ordinance approving specific standards, so it was simply a document that was created by the West End Downtown Neighborhood Commission, unless there was a development agreement that was...
And approved by the council.
And approved by the council. Correct, correct. Now, a development agreement can be negotiated, which would be required, required standards for the developer to proceed with in designing their, their buildings. In two thousand and nine, the city council approved architectural and design guidelines for all commercial development as an appendix to Vista twenty twenty, and then they incorporated some of the West End guidelines into that document. Now, the impetus for this approval had to do with, we see, we saw a lot of architectural buildings popping up on the West End, and I know that the council at that time had some concerns about adding some architectural design feature to some of these buildings. So, that was kind of the impetus of creating these, this new document back in two thousand and nine. However, they still wanted to be very flexible in how they enforced some of these guidelines, which is why they were presented as guidelines. And second, secondarily, apart from the guidelines being created, there, chapter one fifty-one point two zero of the Development Code was created, which provided that review process for review and approval of these architectural design elements. Now, it leads us up to today. Now, the amendments went to the P and Z Commission. They made several recommendations. They held two work sessions, September eighteenth and December fourth of last year, and P and Z approved the amendments on February fifth, twenty nineteen, with a number of recommendations, which have been incorporated into the draft language and will be identified in this presentation today. So, the goal of the proposed amendments is that the current standards and guidelines are difficult to enforce. The proposed amendments are measured and enforceable. So, as I stated, they were guidelines, and they're subjective criteria, and we've noticed that a lot of developers and architects in this town really want objective standards, criteria to work from.
I just want, I got a comment here, Jeff.
Sure.
You enforce goals and standards, you don't really enforce guidelines. Guidelines are guidelines. That's why...
That is correct. That's correct. And we are enforcing them on a lot of the commercial developers, and that's been part of the problem. There really is no enforceable authority to do that.
Because it's guidelines.
Correct, because it's a guideline.
Probably that was done on purpose, just so you know that.
I understand that, I understand that. So, these, so now we are creating standards, objective standards, which are more, which are enforceable and do have regulatory authority.
There's a big difference between those two statements.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay. Now, although these are objective standards and are mandated by the Development Code, flexibility in the design and, and, as I stated, will have specific objective standards. These standards will apply to new buildings and new site development, and they will also apply to exterior facade modifications to existing buildings requiring a building permit, such as structural changes. It does not apply to buildings that repaint their building. That is not considered a structural change, it's more of a cosmetic change. It is not be applicable to the Development Code. The exceptions to this rule is that these are not applied to single-family residences.
Jeff, for our new council members, can you just give a few examples of what existing would need, what a permit would be needed for, for some that don't, aren't familiar with those?
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Gray. So, if any, if somebody wants to develop a new commercial property, the, the procedure would be to submit a site, commercial site plan, and that is reviewed by the applicable staff members, normally committee of development, fire department, public works, and they look at the various aspects of the site, whether it be landscaping, drainage, parking, access, in addition to the building design and, and architecture itself. Once they meet all of the city's development code requirements during the approval, during the review process, it is then approved by a, a committee called the Development Review Committee, and they are the final approval authority on all commercial site plans. So, what we're saying in this case is that it'll apply to any of those new commercial site plans that come in for review, that these architectural design standards will apply to these new commercial buildings that are, come in for review and approval.
And then, on existing buildings, what kind of things would people, what, what kind of things do you pull permits for on existing buildings that would require them to update some of these things?
So, in existing buildings, a lot of times it'll be structural changes, they're making facade improvements, actual, yeah, additions to, additions to buildings, that type of things, what we're looking for, and that's typically approved through the building plan review process, not necessarily through a site plan, but nonetheless, we still are looking at it in this case for, for architectural and design review.
A couple of real live examples would be the Pizza Hut renovation, Burger King renovation.
Right.
Those are existing buildings that were reef, with a new facade put on.
Correct.
Thank you.
And then, some exceptions to the architectural design standards would be single-family residences. This is not going to apply to residential, it'll strictly be to resident to commercial industrial, multifamily apartment complexes, those types of developments which we review under the Commercial Site Plan Review Process. I have multi, multifamily development of less than four units on one lot. The reason why it says four or, or less units is because once you hit five units, becomes, is defined as an apartment complex, and it becomes a commercial site plan at that point. Review authority, this, the amendments will remove Architectural Review Committee and will replace the Director of Committee of Development as the review authority over architectural design review and over the, and over commercial site plans.
So, in the past, how many times, just to guess, has the Architectural Review Committee actually met in the last ten years?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, they do meet fairly frequently whenever there is a commercial site plan that is submitted, or building plans with the structural changes, the Architectural Review Committee does meet. Now, it does consist of applicable staff members, they'll look and review and make recommendations.
So, it's a staff committee?
It's a staff committee. That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Yep. So, there are also some clarifications with the Architectural Design Review Process. We're clarifying the overall review process for building architecture and site plan. The architecture and site design can be submitted with site plan or building plans and reviewed simultaneously. This is the current process now, we're just clarifying that process in the Development So, when we look at the specific standards, you'll see that there's a two-tier approach. The developer is required to meet specific design standards, and secondarily, they can choose from a selection of design standards, much like, kind of like a menu you see at a restaurant. Now, there are eight design standards or design elements that the developer will have to either choose from or will have to meet. The first two, facade materials, building color, will be required design elements that every commercial development will, will be required to meet. The other six, building scale, building massing, roof form, location, orientation of building entrances, windows, and site design, will all be to the discretion of the developer. However, they are required to meet at least three of the remaining six design elements, based to their choosing, as to which ones they feel will be most beneficial to their development. And I'll talk about these more as we go further into the presentation. I already talked about that. Okay, so let's talk first about facade materials. As I mentioned earlier, this is a required design element that every development will require to meet. Buildings are to be constructed with approved facade materials, such as brick, wood, stucco, and glass, or metal, brick or stone veneers, and their artificial derivatives. So, again, you can't have exposed metal, okay? You have to have some sort of facade material over the, over this metal.
Jeff.
Yes?
Is there, or could you give us the reason why not to have exposed metal?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Calhoun. I think from, from looking at past practice and some of, some of the council considerations in the past, that they don't want to see the look of exposed metal, they want to see more of an architectural feel to the building, so they want to have some sort of a facade improvement on the building themselves. That's not to say they can't have, a portion of the building couldn't be exposed metal, but they don't want an exposed metal building, you know, I, I, you know, they, again, past council has felt that exposed metal isn't the best aesthetic, building aesthetic in the community, and so they want to see some sort of facade over those buildings.
Is that something that's open to waiver?
There's actually a waiver section, which I'm going to talk about later on in the presentation, which somebody can certainly talk, apply for.
Okay, thank you.
If they don't want to meet certain criteria, the criteria.
And there, actually, built into the presentation are locational standards for the percentage of metal facade allowed. Right now, again, as Jeff said, it's a uniform standard, so it applies citywide. There was discussion at the P and Z level about exempting out the industrial areas in town and perhaps along the side streets, while increasing the percentage along the major commercial corridors, just to improve the image and character of the city, and I think he's about to talk about...
And that's correct, yeah. So, thank you for that segue into the, the facade recommendations. So, these were the P and Z recommendations based on the amount of facade improvements on building walls. So, buildings within a commercial zoning district and adjacent to arterial roadways, so this will be commercial areas along ninety-two, Frye Boulevard, Highway ninety, seventy percent of the building wall is required to have some sort of a facade improvement. And again, it's one of those improvement, one of those facades which I mentioned in the last screen, on the last slide. Buildings within a commercial zoning district and adjacent to collector local roadways, fifty percent of the building wall. And the reason why this is recommended, recommended, recommended is because they felt there should be a higher standard for those buildings along commercial corridors, as opposed to those which are on local streets. And I have a map here showing you all the locations of the arterial roadways, so all the lines in blue, all the lines in red, are either major or minor arterials in Sierra Vista, and you can see, you know, Buffalo Solid Trail, Frye Boulevard, ninety-two. So, all of these areas here will be required to have the higher level of facade improvement on their buildings. Buildings within an industrial zoning district, twenty-five percent of the building wall, as opposed to seventy-five, again, in the commercial corridors, this type, at this point, we're kind of looking at the function and the use of the building. You know, industrial areas are typically not on the commercial corridor, they're kind of, in the certain sections of town, and we felt that twenty-five percent, as opposed to seventy-five percent, is more appropriate for the industrial areas. In buildings within residential zoning districts, fifty percent of the building wall will be required to have a facade improvement. Again, it's for protection to the residences, so they're not looking at, you know, for lack of a better term, an eyesore, commercial eyesore next to their properties.
Let me clarify, too. I was thinking about metal things like, you know, the way they advertise Cochise College, and they have that rusted metal piece that, and other, that's more of, I wasn't thinking of like a tin building.
Okay.
So, I realize those kinds of things are kept to a smaller amount of building, but there's that building in Tucson that, if you're going in on Alvernon, I think the whole building is, looks like those Cochise College signs, and over the years, you know, it, it patinaed into, and it's not an unattractive building, and I was just curious about something like that.
Well, certainly, Councilmember Calhoun, metal can be, you know, can be incorporated as part of the overall facade improvement, design of the building. I think the concern from the council privacy was having the entire building itself be a metal building.
Metal, metal building, yeah.
Correct. So, when I, I mentioned building walls earlier, and let me specify about what I'm referring to, but the facade improvements required on building walls which face a public street or face an existing residential use. So, for example, we have a building, four sides of a building, only those sides of the building that face a public roadway, public street, or face an existing residential use are required to have a type of facade improvement on it. If that's not the case, then they can leave the metal, or they can leave the building in its natural state, doesn't have to have these facade improvements on it. And then, we're also saying that at least two different facade materials shall be used on all applicable building walls, they could be stone and stucco, it could be, a portion could be metal, and slump block, whatever the case may be, they have to use at least two, two of these materials into, in the building. Okay, the other required design element that every building will be required to meet would be building colors. Now, what we're saying, what's being recommended is that there be a minimum of seventy-five percent of the total wall and roof area shall use muted colors and earth tones, and that they have a light reflectance value of fifty percent or less, and that bright colors can be used as part of, as accents to the building only. Now, I want to talk about that first and show you what we're referring to. I have a color palette here, which I got off the internet, and it basically identifies the number of colors that are available within this earth tone palette. You see, there's a number of, there's a number of colors, and it's not just beiges and browns, it goes from, from greens and yellows and oranges and, you know, runs a gamut of different type of colors. So, you know, earth tone is, is a, is a pretty general term that incorporates many different colors. And I also pulled off these, these colors here from a, a paint contractor online, and what I have is, I have the, the color, and I have the light reflectance value next to it. For example, you see the, on the upper left-hand corner, like kind of the pink color, that has a light reflectance value of twenty. We see that the green color has a light reflectance value of twelve, and we see a, a light blue color, which has, actually, is, is at fifty itself. So, again, there's all different variations of colors within this LRV fifty percent or less, in addition to the earth tones. Now, the P and Z made a recommendation at their last work session, and they, they stated that they didn't want the building color design criteria to be applicable to the West End. They wanted it only for the remaining portions of the, of the city, but not to the West End. They felt that this would limit creativity and vibrancy on the West End. They felt that, you know, by not having any limitations on building colors, it may, you know, prevent a potential investor to move into the West End if they can't create or, or design their building the way they want to design it. So, they added this condition that these colors would not be applicable to buildings on the West End.
Excuse me.
Uh, Mr. Pregler, what exactly have we actually defined what the West End is?
Thank you, that's a good, that's a good question, Councilmember Wolf.
[laughing]
The West, the West End boundaries are defined in the Vista twenty thirty general plan. It's also, it's defined as part of the infill and center district, and if you look at the general plan, it defines the West End boundaries as being those areas, west of Seventh Street and south to Golf Links.
North of Golf Links.
North, I'm sorry, north, north of Golf Links. That's, that, that is considered the, the city's West End.
The question I have for you is, and I don't want necessarily having dual commissions here, but has this question been posed to the West End Commission?
Yes, it has.
What did they say?
They want their own color palette, but they were not specific in what should be on that palette.
Okay.
They just know they want to be different from the rest of the city, so...
Got it, that answers my question.
Yeah.
Okay.
What, what are the, what kind of conversation will we have around that? Will they make a recommendation to the city, or, or what, how will that? Because we'd like to have some sense of that.
Who, you talking about the West End Commission?
Yeah, when they are, are they going to present a recommendation about how those colors, or is it unbounded, or how?
Well, by exempting them from the earth tone and muted color scheme, that creates the latitude for any property or business owner to, you know, paint whatever color they want. So, in effect, we're achieving their stated goal of, you know, providing more flexibility in differentiating the West End from the rest of the city, but if there is, you know, a particular scheme that wasn't expressed to me, and if it's the council's desire, we can try to articulate that more clearly.
Not necessarily, I was just curious.
Okay.
I, I don't think the, the council has any skin for the, for that.
Jeff?
Thank you.
All right, so the next design element I want to talk about would be building scale, and what is being recommended is that there, that the buildings define a rhythm and pattern of windows, columns, awnings, and other architectural features, provide a human scale to the primary entrance, express the position of each floor in the, in the external design of the building. So, here we see here, pattern of archways, windows, columns, awnings, this is one example of, of architectural feature that some buildings in the community are already using, and this is, these are one of the, the preferred, certainly, methods in architectural design.
And by the way, that was a metal building with a veneer put on it.
That's a, that's a good point. Yes, this was a metal building. Building massing would be the next design element. Wall planes divided into modules that express additional dimensions. The primary facade plane shall not exceed seventy-five feet, I should say feet, in length, without a jog, which shall divide the facade into subordinate elements each less than seventy-five feet in length.
Suicide at your leisure.
Now, I have a photo here, kind of what I'm referring to. So, the Wild Birds Unlimited Building, what, the way that the, the proposed amendments would read is that you can't have a building which will exceed seventy-five feet without, without having a jog, or some sort of a divider between different building modules. So, you see here, there are two separate modules with this building, two distinct modules. You can definitely tell what the Wild Birds Unlimited Building is and where the next business is, and so what we're seeing is you can't exceed seventy-five percent without having some sort of a jog. It kind of breaks up the monotony of a, of a wall, and it kind of provides more architectural, architectural features and design into the building itself.
Do you find that it generally costs more? Like, I, obviously, it would, but how much more does it generally cost to do that?
Councilmember Wolf, that's a good question. I'm not sure about the additional cost of, of this. That's, I can certainly look that up for you and find that out for you.
It really depends on how elaborate they want to go with the design.
Yeah.
Because you could spend some, you could really spend some big bucks, or you could do it in a way, just like when Walmart put their building in, we had the same kind of requirements, instead of having one big block of a building, they basically broke it up, and I'm sure over the, over the span of the, the size of the building, it didn't cost that much, but again, if you're talking smaller places and you're going to intricate detail, then it's going to, obviously, going to cost a lot more.
I think that you, I just, my concern is that I don't want our designers, although they look nice to the eye, I don't want them to discourage businesses from coming in, and I guess that's where my question is coming from. I'm not looking for the over, I'm looking for the under.
Right.
So, since you have this pitch up here, just a quick question.
Sure.
Where the Wild Birds Unlimited is, right next door is an empty building, whether it is or not, there's no sign on it. If I leased that building, I want to do something different, does the whole building now have to coincide with that, or is it going to be piecemeal, if that makes sense?
Uh, Mr. Bennin, I, I think what you're asking is, do they have to redesign the building, or, or meet different architectural design standards now the new...
No, sir, right now, if you look at the picture you have displayed.
Right.
We have three different color roofs, if you would, and I know they're differentiated by depth, but if I update and have to change my roof, because now I've drawn a permit to change my facade, does the whole building have to follow suit, or just that building?
Uh, Councilmember Bennin, I would say just that, that particular building would have to meet, not the entire building.
Okay.
Just, just a portion of which you were, yeah, redesigning and...
And the reason I ask, and, and, and I understand, and the reason I'm asking is, because then we're going to have the same issue, we'll have piecemeals from developed buildings already. So, you'll have one with earth tone roofs, one with whatever roof they had beforehand. You'll have one with different architecture design, one without, so you still have that piecemeal problem you have, like you have at Vista Plaza right now, where there's nothing that looks the same, there's nothing that even goes together, so that's the only reason I was asking.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Sure. And then, continuing with building massing, change the height of a wall plane or building mass by providing vertical articulation. The change in height shall be at least twenty percent of the vertical height of an adjacent wall plane or building mass, and again, here we see the vertical articulation, the recommendation is that the, the adjacent wall itself can't, has to be at least twenty percent of, of the adjacent wall. So, for example, if it's, you know, eighty feet, has to be either sixty feet or a hundred feet, in terms of, in the, in terms of a difference in height. Does that make sense?
It does, I guess you saw my face.
I did see your face.
I, I was just trying to understand the reason for that. Is it, again, just, it looks pretty, it looks better structurally?
Yes. Yes, yes. Visual interest.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's the intent of, of these design guidelines, to provide visual interest.
Okay. Well, what I, I was trying to understand from, uh, Williams' question, it's sort of, all of the, the requirements work together, I, I would think. I can't visualize it all, but all those eight elements and the other things you're saying, they all work together. So, if you redesigned your facade, then, um, it would still have to fit into the requirements that the city has, which would then match up in that particular example. Complement, yeah. However, in the older structures, you know, as we add new things, as we, you redo the facades, there might be some lack of cohesiveness because the old building.
Roger.
So, it, it seems to work, what you're doing. Do you think? Don't you think?
It, it does. And, and that was my concern. So far, we're looking at a lot of, um, new construction, what it would look like, what it would have to look, look like. And I'm, I'm guessing we're going to get to updated structures here soon. But that was my concern is if, uh, Cryogenics just moved in, not to sell the company. But if they were on those standards, if they're on the new standards, they would look totally different than anyone else in that plaza. And that's the concern is now if you drive through.
The standards are for new construction though, aren't they? Unless there's, unless there's a substantial redo.
Unless I have to draw a permit, which they did.
To the exterior. Yeah, for a T, a TI, you wouldn't have to go through architectural review.
Oh, oh. Even the facade of the building wouldn't have to go through?
If you're not changing the facade.
If you're changing.
If you're not changing, but if you are, then you do.
And change the interior of the building without the facade.
So, it's not busi, business specific, it's building specific? Something property specific?
Okay. Uh, the next design element would be roof form. Incorporate the following features to add architectural articulation and reduce perceived scale, such as overhanging eaves, multiple roof planes, cornices or moldings, a flat roof with parapet, uh, sloping rubs. And then this is an example of building has a cornice on the top. Again, it's also, I believe, a, a parapet wall as well. Again, provide visual interest, visual, um, feature. Okay. The next one would be location and orientation of building entrances. The main entrance shall be clearly identifiable by emphasizing and enhancing the level of architectural details, such as a change in plane, porticoes, recessed entrances on the street facade, a differentiation in material and color, and enhanced lighting. Again, I give an example of, of what this would be. We see a very defined, um, front entryway for this particular building, and those are the type of things we'd be looking for, um, with new development. Again, continuing with location and orientation of building, uh, primary entrance of the building shall be oriented to face a street, plaza, or pedestrian way and want to locate utility, mechanical room, or service entrance as service doors away from public buildings or public sidewalks. Uh, windows, want to maximize number of street-level facade openings for windows and organize the placement of windows and doors on the building elevation relative to each other and the building's form to ensure they are balanced and proportionate. Uh, again, example of, of rows of windows on buildings. I want to set storefront window frames at a height above the finished grade. Uh, recessed window frames from a typical wall plane surface to provide a shadow line and to accentuate the storefront. Uh, and then for upper-level facades, provide a pattern that includes window openings that are greater in height than width. And I want to show this, this is an example of, of creating windows at the plane of the elevation. You know, you see a lot of these for people that want to go window shopping. They can go, as they're walking along, come in and look through the windows, see what's being sold. And these are the type of buildings and windows that we want to, um, recommend for these new, for these, uh, new buildings. Include operable windows and delineate changes in surface material. In the site design, pedestrian, outdoor amenities. Want to have covered walkways or canopies, textured or raised pavement areas for pavement connections, courtyards, pedestrian gathering areas, seating features, benches, pedestrian scale lighting, outdoor lighting areas. Again, this is a good example of what we're referring to. We have pedestrian lighting, we have outdoor seating areas, we have some, uh, benches for pedestrians to sit. Uh, these are, again, these are the type of site design features we'll be looking for, the development of these new site designs, these site, new sites, I should say. Orientation of buildings, orient toward views of activities, architectural landmarks, and orient to take advantage of solar energy that will allow for passive heating in the building, provide natural light, and harvest solar power. And I mentioned earlier about the waiver process. If there is a developer that doesn't feel they need to, they want to meet one of these criteria, they can go through a waiver process, which will be heard by the Development Review Committee. This was a Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation. The initial language basically stated that the Director of Community Development would, would make that decision with all the waivers. They wanted to have a second set of eyes review the waivers. So, they put in, they recommended that the Development Review Committee, who already reviews and approves commercial site plans, would be that waiver authority. And there are several criteria for meeting the waivers. Somebody states that they have a superior alternative, that they want to protect significant features, that it'll be a deprivation of reasonable use, technical impracticality, or that there's no relationship to the development or its impacts and the proposed design elements.
Jeff, would you say a little bit more about deprivation of reasonable use?
Basically, if there's no nexus between, uh, the, the required architectural guidelines and the proposed use, uh, for example, if you have an auto shop, for example, and you're, and, you know, we're saying that you have to have, you know, seventy-five percent, a brick building, for example. It doesn't necessarily meet, you know, it wouldn't necessarily be appropriate for, um, a car dealer or a car, auto car sales or auto car repair place to have that type of design criteria.
I see.
So, if they want to maybe ask for a waiver for something a little bit less than what's required in the code, you know, that'd be, that would be an argument they would have.
I see.
As an example.
And again, that review committee would be staff members?
So, the Development Review Committee is made up of staff members and two Planning and Zoning Commission members.
I see.
Now, if somebody wants to appeal a decision by the Development Review Committee, it would be heard by a hearing officer. And then, that would then be appealed to the City Council, who functions as the Board of Adjustment.
So, ultimately, you can go through the appeals if people are unhappy. And ultimately, we would see it, and that would be sort of the end game?
They can always appeal to Superior Court, ultimately.
I suppose that's fair. I guess what I just want to make sure is that people can appeal, and if it got to that point, that we could see it and make a decision.
Yes.
Policy-based, okay.
Correct.
And one other item, Jeff? One other item, um, there was a comment in, in the reading about, that the Development Review Committee would give a status report to the City Council. It was crossed off. I, would you comment on that?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Calhoun. Uh, to be honest with you, that has never been, in all my years I've been here with the city, I think I've been here eighteen years, the Development Review Committee has never given an update to the council. That's, that's usually been the role of staff. Staff's given that update and, um, projects that have come to, come to the city for review.
Which we do get.
The Chair of the Committee is basically, yeah, Matt.
Yeah.
And we provide you an update through the executive report.
Right.
On all commercial projects.
Thank you.
Sure. So, that does conclude staff's report.
Questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, on the, just defining the process, we, our vote, our vote would, on Thursday, would be to open a thirty-day comment period. And after thirty days, we'd have the option to take into consideration comments and make changes or?
We can, you can amend, approve, not, you know, not approve.
Okay. But ultimately, it would come to council.
Yeah, to come back to the council after the thirty-day period. And what I, what I suggest here is that, uh, what outreach have we done with realtors, contractors, and chamber business owners to date?
Uh, to date, uh, there has been no outreach to those groups.
And that's, that's one of the things, just from personal experience and doing this in the past. Yeah, I think it's very important, uh, Mr. McLaughlin, to reach out to the leadership of those organizations and say, here's what it is. You know, it's at least a phone call. For their, their bird dog is in their organization to run this down and come back and give you some feedback before the thirty-day period. And that's going to prevent, in my experience, having half a room full of people that are all ticked off about something that, that they don't need to be ticked. So, it's worth that effort to do that.
Absolutely. That was our intention. We just want to get your feedback on the P and Z's proposal, be, to see if it's even worth pursuing, um, before taking those steps.
Okay.
But they need to be. My experience.
Sure.
I have a concern about a broad exemption for the entire West End.
Just on color.
On, well, on color. So, they would, just on color, not on anything else?
Right.
Okay. I still. There's already enough flexibility in these.
In the palette.
In, in the palette, there's so much flexibility already that, you know, if they were to go outside of the color.
And who's, who's the West End?
Are they trying to go fluorescent pink or what? I mean.
Carol, you're the West End, and can you broach that with these guy, with them at your next meeting?
Well, um.
Because I hear at least two council members don't think they should get an exception.
Yeah, and when Matt brought it to them at the last meeting, they were very happy to be exempted. They were very happy to hear that. So, I, and I know they don't want anything outrageous. They don't, they want the murals, but they don't.
Well, the murals.
Murals are different.
I understand that. I'm just saying, they're not looking to make it like hot pink and neon colors down there. They just.
But the way it's stated now, it is wide open.
Yeah.
So, it could be.
I don't like that.
I think the word was eclectic. Yeah, that they used.
Eclectic, if you have a pink building, it's going to eliminate some people moving down there if I can't get rid of that pink building.
Right. They don't want that. They want a more, uh, more continuity in their buildings, but they didn't want to be limited to earth. I think the wording was earth tones. They didn't want.
Had a briefing from staff on what actually the earth tones are.
We'll, we'll do that prior to the final vote and try to arrive at a clearer consensus.
They understand that earth tone just, it doesn't mean tan and brown and gray.
Yeah. I think we, we could make a recommendation to the West End Commission that they look at the presentation that you're going to give.
We'll have staff, we'll direct staff to make sure that they get the presentation.
Well, that's not where I was going with that. I was actually going to.
We don't normally recommend commissions. It's usually the other way around.
Yeah. If the manual doesn't say that, the manual says, we recommend to commissions, and they may recommend back to us. So, we can, we can.
We need to change the manual then.
We can discuss it.
Okay.
So, I just, I, I will say with the, um, palette and what y'all are talking about, P and C seem to have the same issue. They were, they were confused, the commission. We're very confused, and, and I know there were some comments that we don't want to just be a beige city, things like that. Once they saw what earth tones were, that completely changed, and they were okay with it.
Yeah, we, we didn't have a palette available for a meeting, so that might change things.
And I, I actually tend to really agree with Councilmember Pacheco. I think that there is plenty of differentiation in the earth tones, and it would still give, I think you could still be fun and funky and have fun colors and still be within.
A palette.
A palette.
Well, and it's only a percentage, too. They still have a percentage of their building they can highlight with fluorescent pink, you know?
Maybe just add, maybe just add in there.
Any, any further discussion on this issue? Jeff, thanks for the brief, and I appreciate your work, and Matt, and the, oh, sorry.
I did remember why they want it to be a little different in the color side. It just came to me. They want, when people enter the West End, they want people to know that they're suddenly in the West End. That was one of the reasons.
Three signs and the brick and the stones don't do that for them.
Well, no, but if, if, if we had that, like the stones we have on the one side, if we have that on the other side. Maybe with the redevelopment, that can be something.
All right. They need, they need to be, we need to show them that they're still special.
Right, right.
Okay. Jeff, thanks. Matt, thank you. Appreciate all your hard work. And thank the, uh, P and Z for, uh, for taking this on. Uh, next we move to, uh, and that, again, that'll be for a thirty-day comment period. Uh, we next move to item number four, amendments to the city code parking regulations, et cetera. And who's going to do this? Assistant City Manager? Victoria? No? I thought you were the brave one. Come on.
This has to do with the parking requirements?
That's what I, that's what I understand.
Okay.
That's what I read.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mayor Mueller, members of council. The Planning and Zoning Commission, in working with staff on its annual work program, identified a need to enact parking regulations into the city code of ordinances. As a result, a number of proposed amendments have been included in Chapter Seventy-One, Parking, for your consideration. The Planning and Zoning Commission held two work sessions on September eighteenth, twenty eighteen, and December fourth, twenty eighteen, where they discussed potential draft language. The commission ultimately approved the amendments after February fifth meeting. Now, the current language under Chapter Seventy-One, Parking, establishes requirements and penalties for vehicle parking in disabled parking spaces. However, the proposed amendments expand the scope of this chapter to include conventional parking requirements on public streets that are commonly covered in municipal codes and follow Arizona revised statutes. For example, uh, one of the amendments states that if, it shall be prohibited to park within fifteen feet of a fire hydrant, which is consistent with state law. The police department provided comments related to these requirements, which have been integrated into the language. Now, another component to the proposed amendments is language that would place restrictions on the parking of recreational vehicles and trailers on public roadways. The language limits the parking of, of RVs and trailers on public roadways to no longer, no longer than five days in any thirty-day period. The limitation of five days was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, whom felt that this was ample time for an individual to load or unload the vehicles prior or following their use. Now, in a review of other communities that regulate RV parking, um, the parking restrictions vary from two days up to seven days. So, the proposed five days falls within the time restrictions of other communities. Uh, the language further clarifies that the movement of these vehicles from one point directly to another point within the same block shall be deemed as one continuous parking period. So, if you, if you go from one block to the other, the five days would continue to be counted. It doesn't start over again. Uh, the restrictions were developed in response to citizen concerns about the safety of pedestrians and other vehicles along roadways. In a review of citizen complaints a day back to twenty sixteen, the city has received twenty-three complaints related to RVs and trailers either blocking the vision of drivers' intersections or obstructing the right-of-way as drivers back out on their driveways. And in fact, as an aside, we actually received two complaints today about this very issue. So, to be completely transparent, there are some properties on this, on the seventy-three complaints, which I just stated to you, that have received multiple complaints. However, a good portion of the complaints are related to separate properties in the community. Also note, the list of complaints presented to you are only those complaints received by the Department of Community Development, and do not include those complaints received and responded to by the police department. In addition, the Fire Marshal has provided a statement, which has been provided to you, that indicates his support of the amendments as they relate to reduced roadway widths and emergency vehicle response times. The draft amendments also include an enforcement section, which describes the process for citing and removing vehicles that are in violation of the parking regulations in this chapter. A definition of recreational vehicle and trailer have also been included in the proposed language to assist in the enforcement of these vehicles. Now, the city has received a number of public comments addressing the proposed amendments, which have been attached. One of the comments, uh, discussed existing parking regulations related to RVs and trailers. So, just to be clear, there is currently no regulations restricting RV and trailer parking in the right-of-way. There are restrictions, however, regulating the amount of time an individual can live within an RV, which is limited to no more than fourteen consecutive days. But that applies to RV parked on private property, not in the public right-of-way. Staff is still trying to, um, the, our staff's still receiving public comments. And hopefully by Thursday, I will provide you a summary of those public, public comments as part of my presentation. But as of a half hour ago, I received yet another comment. So, uh, hopefully by Thursday, I'll, I'll be able to provide you more of a, a summary of those comments. Uh, so, as was stated earlier, the council will consider this item on Thursday, determine whether to proceed with a thirty-day public comment period. The council will vote on the amendments following the public comment period. So, that does conclude staff's report.
Questions or discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I have a few. Um, it was seventy-three complaints in what period of time? I'm sorry.
Since twenty sixteen.
Okay.
Past two years.
And, um, it didn't include the police department fielding complaints?
That is correct.
We have numbers for. We have numbers for the last couple of years on that?
Mayor Mueller, Councilmember Humphrey, we did query our Spillman database and it looks like in twenty seventeen we had twenty-two complaints and in twenty eighteen, twenty-seven complaints.
Thank you.
And there's no way of knowing if they're duplicative?
Correct.
And we, we weren't able to, with the current code, we aren't able to do anything about those complaints. Is that the, the problem?
I would say if they're violating some other statutes such as parking too close to a stop sign or crosswalk or blocking a private drive, we could. But otherwise, if they're otherwise properly parked, we could not.
Right. Thank you.
And how many of those complaints were we able to take care of with the codes that we currently have in effect? Do you know offhand?
I don't.
I know. I feel like I'm like testing you right now and I'm super sorry for that.
I do have a question, but it might be better for the city attorney, or maybe Chuck can answer it. With, given that he was mentioning line of sight being blocked and hazardous causing, blocking the roadways. Should a accident, okay, so these people contacted the city and we're not able to help them right now. And they can't get out of their own driveway because their line of sight is blocked. Let's say something, an accident happens and somebody gets hurt or injured. Would that, what would the implications be if we don't pass this proposed amendment? And say something bad like that happens and a suit were to arise, would we be found with potential liabilities?
Mayor Mueller, Councilwoman Humphrey, first, obviously, police department would check to see if there are any state statutes violations as Deputy Chief Cosmider has mentioned. Some of those would probably fall into the cases that you're mentioning and then we can certainly take care of those types of situations. One good rule of thumb is anybody can sue anybody and we have the deep pockets, so we can, we're certainly open to lawsuit on, on anything, whether we had anything to do with it or not. Generally, you know, if it's not really covered, I'm not sure how, how much liability we would have in that particular case. I don't, you know, I, I guess it could be assigned. It depends on the jury ultimately at that point. But I'm not sure that we have a tremendous amount of liability unless there's an egregious thing going on that we haven't taken care of.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I have a question. Have we had, do we have any data on any instances of safety? You know, problems with RVs on the streets? We have complaints. We know how many people have complained, but do we have any, has, has anything occurred?
Mayor Mueller, Councilmember Pacheco, I don't have that data with me. I don't know of any particular incidents or accidents that have occurred as a result. We have had a number of complaints. I don't know if there's accidents related to those. I can go back and double check on that for you.
I hate to say, but validating, validating, I can't say the word, validating the concerns, right? So the concern is it's unsafe. Well, has, has that ever been validated? Has it ever proven unsafe?
There are other concerns.
Member Pacheco, we'll have to check our database to see if that was the contributing factor in any accidents. I would say if there were, the number would be pretty few.
We know that there have been service interruptions to trash pickup, mail delivery, it takes out parking in front of people's homes for guest parking. So it's not just public safety that weighed in the minds of the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was a myriad of issues, including those expressed by the Fire Marshal.
Oh, go ahead. I have an. Just wanted to ask, could you repeat again what the time that it can be on the street is? Three days, two days, five?
Five days within a thirty day period. Correct.
In a thirty day.
I, I did have, I think for Matt, and just because, just to remind everyone, it would still be, we were not going to go out and look for violations to cite. This would still be on a complaint basis if there was an issue with them.
The way we approach enforcement.
Yeah, it would just continue that way.
So my, one more question, well, maybe two, is that. So we don't already have anything in place. You specific, it specifically mentions, or you specifically mentioned blocking fire hydrants? Isn't that already in?
That is.
That one.
It's in state law.
Yeah, that's in state law. So I don't know why, you know, that's already illegal to block a fire hydrant?
Well, we're, we're, we're integrating those state laws into the local parking code. That's what that's.
Was that specifically mentioned by the Fire Marshal and his?
No, that's, that's, that's one of the.
It's in, it's one of the provisions.
I think his concern was, you know, constricted access in an emergency situation. On smaller, smaller width streets.
I think, Matt, what she's saying is, isn't it duplicative of state law to have it in city ordinance at the same time?
And I had a conversation with the city attorney about that very issue before this meeting. And it is common practice for local governments to adopt parking regulations into the municipal code to convey those standards to the residents in one place.
The other concerns that were mentioned specifically, let's see. You know, do, do we already, we don't have any parking restrictions in place that, you know, about inhibiting mail delivery or, like I said, fire hydrant or trash pickup or anything. We don't have anything right now stating that.
As long as it's not legally marked no parking, you can park on the public street as long as you're not blocking a driveway, straddling a sidewalk, or, you know, within a certain distance of a stop sign or fire hydrant. So, and we did have a complaint last year. You may remember. I think she even attended the meeting about her mail service being blocked on a repeated basis, so.
Okay. I just want, I just want to throw one thing out on this. I find, I find the five day limit a little, a little short. I know you said seven to two days is normal, normal. And I'd just like the, the folks to think about this before this comes back on Thursday. If we're going to be good neighbors and we're going to, we're going to park our trailers and RVs in the right spot and we're going to do the right thing, we need to look at both sides of the issue. I think we've heard the complaint side of the issue pretty, pretty thoroughly. But if I were an RV-er and I was planning on my big trip, I would probably go after work on Friday or Saturday morning and get my RV out of storage or my trailer out of storage and park it safely in front of my house on my side of the street. I would take that weekend to clean it up and I'd take that week to pack so that when Friday night comes and I get off work, I'm moving, going to wherever I'm going for that weekend. Likewise, if it's not within thirty days that I come back, I would like to come back at a reasonable time, maybe a week, maybe two weeks, maybe three weeks, under the thirty day window. And then again, pull in Sunday night, park it legally in front of my residence, safely in front of my residence, and then take five days to clean it up, et cetera, et cetera, do the final stuff on Saturday or Sunday and then go park it in the, in the, in the barn, where that barn may be, whether it's on my property or whether it's in another location. So I really think we need to look at both sides. And we need to give the RV-ers, the trailer pullers, or whatever you want to call them, a little, a little slack on the, on the five days and maybe make it seven days. And maybe not within the thirty-eight period unless he's going away for, I can't, I don't know too many people that, unless they're really retired, go on the road for more than thirty days. So that part of it may not be practical. And that's just, I want you to think, make about that. And I may make, I may make an amendment based on your feedback.
I, I like that. But there was, there was also an issue that came up at PNC, right, about if they have guests staying in the RV, that someone else's RV just parked out and that we could waive it if someone called and complained, right?
To me, that's, that's a separate issue because you mentioned that when.
Sorry, it just made me think of it.
You mentioned that is, is we only allow, was it fourteen days for people to actually?
When it's parked on your property.
When it's parked on your property.
In a residential zone.
Park in the street. They got to be on the property.
There was a lot of back and forth about the timeframe with the Planning and Zoning Commission.
What I'm saying is, we look, we look at and understand what the planners are talking about.
Right, right.
And we need to take time to understand what the RV-ers or the trailer haulers are talking about and figure out what, what's proper for both.
And I could tell you the principal concern.
Looking for balance.
From those calling code enforcement are the permanent long-term storage. I mean, those that are moving in and out for a week or ten days, that's not what you're getting calls about.
We don't feel like this, the presented recommendation reflects that to me. That, you know, saying you can't be there for more than five days and thirty, that's not reflective of permanent long-term storage problem on the public roadway.
It's the recommendation of the commission.
Just one point of clarification.
Just, just to hit that point, I think the whole purpose of this, behind this is to point out that the proper way to do it is not allow permanent on public road parking for RVs. They should be, be stored on private property or in a facility. That's, I think that's the point. Excuse me.
We need to define what permanent means.
Well.
Yeah.
Right.
More than seven days.
More than seven days in a thirty day period. Is that defined?
Okay.
Unless you want to hit this one. Rachel was up next. Chuck?
Oh, go ahead, Rachel.
No, no, no. It has nothing to do with what Sarah asked. It's a total different point, so.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, you know, listening to the discussion, you know, I think you used the phrase, being a good neighbor. And I think that's really what we're talking about here. Obviously, there are safety concerns and we can certainly strengthen this ordinance to, ordinance to address safety or, or concerns with regards to service provision, like, you know, parking in front of mailboxes and, you know, all those kinds of things. But really, it does get down to the definition of permanent storage. And I, I do agree that I think that's what most people are concerned about is you got a trailer or an old RV sitting in front of the lawn forever. And, you know, is that an appropriate thing? And is that really being a good neighbor? So, you know, it's, the council really sets the community standards on what you want to see here. And I think the way this is crafted, it can be amended easily to address what you think the community standard, you know, should be. And, you know, you get a chance to hear a lot more from the public as we go through this thirty day period.
Anybody else on this issue? All right. Thank you, Mr. Fregler.
Okay, so I, I did have.
Did you, did you have one?
Yeah, it was on the same topic. It just wasn't on what the conversation was right then. So a comment I've heard, some comments I've heard and, and also seen have been people have expressed concern and I just want to make sure that when we're out talking to the public, we make it very clear that if someone, for example, drives an eighteen wheeler on the road and then they park it when they're home, this is not applying to that. This is a twenty-four hour continuous parking of RVs or trailers, not workday traffic, not parking if someone parks on the street when they get home from work and things like that. So I just want us to be very clear on what we're doing here, just based on those comments, that there's no confusion.
But we do have an ordinance about eighteen wheelers on the street too.
Right, but I just use that as an example, but, I mean.
Because there's a limit.
Yeah.
For, of three days, I think, for eighteen wheelers. Do you recall?
Look it up.
Okay.
On a, on a local street? An eighteen wheeler?
Yeah.
Well, I think that.
I think they're confined to truck routes.
The cab.
Okay.
The cab is what I'm referring to.
You know, now, you know, you brought it up.
Not the whole trailer.
You brought it up though, but there are instances.
Are you talking about like a landscape contractor with a trailer with equipment in back?
No, these are highway eighteen wheelers.
Okay.
Which I have seen on cities, on, as a matter of fact, on my street, two or three days in a row when that driver.
Mine as well.
When that driver is home for a break. So.
Just the rig, not the trailer?
Just the rig, just the cab.
Okay, the rig is fine.
No, no, I'm talking about the entire vehicle.
They have the trailer.
Yeah.
Okay. I haven't seen that yet.
Matt, another example I would be referring to would be like if someone drives a Snap-on sales tool vehicle and they're gone during the day working, they park it on the street at night. We're not saying that those cannot park there on the street at night when they come in from work. That's not what this ordinance is doing. And I feel like I'm confusing the issue based on your face more than I'm clarifying it, so.
Basically, what, what you're saying is you drop the trailer in front, legally parked in front of the house, you go do your, your business or whatever, the next day you pick up the trailer to take it to work with you.
Right. That's okay. That's not, we're not saying you can't do that.
So.
I think it has to be continuously parked.
Yes, and that's, that's my point.
If they're moving every day, it's not continuously parked.
Right, right.
I got a comment. Oh, thank you. I think very vague code. Because on the same thing that Ms. Rachel just said, I can say the same thing. If I take my RV, drive to Walmart, hang out for a couple hours, go to work, then I come back and park on my street, I'm not continuously parking there. So the vagueness of the code, of the, the code is so vague. I know you said I can't move right up the street, but how do you know I didn't go away and come back? So the enforcement of it is what I'm getting at. It's.
Well, and that's why we put the thirty day threshold on there, so we're not playing cat and mouse. If we go out there and it's parked for more than five days within a thirty day period, that would constitute a violation. But let me read the specific language just so we're on the same page.
Are you going to hold a stakeout?
No.
Yeah, he'll hire your kids a cookie an hour to go out and watch.
I only have four.
While Matt's looking, wait a minute, I just want to say, this ordinance is very specific to RVs and trailers parking. And so it has nothing to do with vehicles and things like. The reason I addressed that was because I've had people ask me about it.
Oh, no, no.
If that means that I can't park my sales truck there, I can't park my landscaping truck. And that ordinance doesn't even address that. It only addresses RVs and trailers.
My, my principal concern with the trailers was the situation where the trailer is parked on blocks, disconnected from a vehicle and just left there. And that's what was originally presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, those that are disconnected from the vehicle. And I think they amended it back to all trailers irrespective of whether they're attached or detached from the vehicle.
Yeah, they wanted a very clear definition.
Right. So that's another policy question I posed to you. Whether we should only confine the trailer issue to those that are detached from the vehicle or you want to regulate those that are also attached.
Well, I have a recommendation from the PNC, right? That's what's before us.
Right.
What does that say?
It says atta, a trailer, so whether it's attached or detached.
If we want to make an amendment, we'll need to make an amendment after the thirty day period.
Right.
Okay. Anything else on this issue? Okay, well, thank you very much. We now move on to financial disclosure. I'm guessing that's, that's Mr. Felix.
Mayor, members of council, actually what this is specifically related to is meeting your prior objective and comment of removing old, outdated and useless basically ordinances. Since I've come here, all of the travel policy has been under admin directive. We've been continuing to update that admin directive. And in researching the most recent update to the admin directive, it was discovered that in the seventies or eighties, it was written into a city ordinance specifically all of the details on the travel policy, including what the per diems are. It was updated every year or two based off the new per diem rates and things like this. All this simply does is remove that ordinance that has been on the books for all of these years that in my whole time here, I never even knew was here. So we have a policy in place.
Get rid of a duplicative, duplicative, I can't even say it, a duplicative ordinance.
Yes. And something that doesn't need to be in ordinance because we don't need to be updating this to you every year when per diem rates change. It's a whole bunch of work. It's much easier and more efficient to do it as an admin policy. We currently have one in place that we are currently updating due to our new software system.
Okay. Questions for David? It's amazing how, to me, you're not as long-winded as Jeff is. Thank you, David. We appreciate it.
All right then, that ends, believe it or not, the agenda items for discussion for, for Thursday. Next up is a presentation from, from Energy Systems Initiative with Snyder Electric. And who's going to introduce that? Looks like the, looks like our Assistant City Manager, Ms. Yarborough, is going to do this one.
Yes, I was just so excited, Mayor, I had to jump up and try and take some of Jeff's time. So, in the interest of time, thank you, Mayor, members of council, I'm going to skip through a couple of.
If we need an extra hour, has anybody got a problem with an extra hour? Okay?
And you also have the transit study coming up after this, so.
That's why I'm saying, you know, we got two big ones coming up here.
Well, I'll just skip some of the ones you've already seen that were a recap from two weeks ago, but, in any case, this is the culmination of about a year of work from staff, and I am pleased to also introduce you to Brandon Woodward, who is standing over here to my left, who is our representative from Schneider Electric, who we've been working with.
Thank you, Sean Woodward, for being here.
And he's here to answer any questions that, or fill in any clarification that I or Chuck or David can't fill in for you all. So the entire solution overview, the entire project that we're here to present to you today is a total of fourteen-point-eight million dollars, which is upgrades and modernizations to the city capital improvement infrastructure. That also takes into account eight thousand dollars in annual savings and revenue generation projected. Some of those savings, as I talked about a couple weeks ago, are guaranteed as part of, or under state law, some of them are not. Some of them are projected, such as the operations and maintenance and revenue numbers, but they're based on some reasonable assumptions. Overall, over the entire lifespan of these projects, we estimate about twenty million dollars in lifecycle savings and revenue generation. So overall, the benefits of this project, what it does for the city as a whole, it would reduce Sierra Vista, our city building utility costs by twenty-two percent, which fits in with your environmental leadership strategic planning goal, and it aligns with our economic development framework, which you just adopted a couple months ago, particularly boosting our sports tourism initiative, but it also significantly reduces maintenance and operation costs in a very variety of ways throughout the city. So again, briefly, the way this project is set up, you take energy conservation measures that are lower cost but produce a higher return on investment and savings, and you leverage those against projects on the economic development side that are higher in cost but. And specifically, what some of those projects are that we've looked at, on the energy conservation measure side, we have LED lighting upgrades in all city buildings, HVAC replacements in a handful of city buildings, some efficiency improvements at the EOP, and a building analytics software solution, which would allow us to very specifically monitor building energy use and allow us to tweak that energy use for maximum energy savings. Those are leveraged against economic development improvements that are higher in cost and lower in savings, but things that we may not be able to just afford on their own. And those things would include LED sports field lighting replacements, artificial turfing for Domingo Pias and the Sierra Center soccer fields, replacing the wave machine at the Cove, and an electrical upgrade at Veterans Park. And so we call that a comprehensive self-funding facility improvement solution, because what it does is it gives us the opportunity to take all of those different projects and package it into one big project, and that is an opportunity for us, because otherwise, if we piecemeal these projects over a number of years, it would be exceptionally staff-time intensive, and the cost would be greater over the long term, because we are realizing some economies of scale by packaging them all together and mobilizing at once. So again, this hits two of our strategic focus areas, that was a missed slide right before this, that would have covered our energy savings and how it would save approximately twenty-two percent of our annual energy costs. This slide is on how it addresses our economic prosperity focus area in the council's strategic plan, and how it would give us the opportunity to really go after that sports tourism initiative. One piece in here that I didn't bring up two weeks ago is the community engagement part that Schneider Electric offers. There would be a real marketing push with this project, something to tell not just our community what we're doing and how the city is saving money and how we are using that money that's being saved to invest back into the community and in this sports tourism initiative, but also outside of Sierra Vista. I know that Schneider Electric would plan to promote this outside of Sierra Vista, and so that would draw some attention nationally to what Sierra Vista is doing with this kind of project. This is just a snapshot of specifically where each of these initiatives would be, and if you have any particular questions about that, I'm happy to answer it, but I'll go on to the specific project. So we divided this up into two, two projects to show you. It is one project, but this is the energy efficiency-only part of the project. This is the, all of the items that are lower cost, higher return on investment, higher payback. This is the energy efficiency part, that the savings are guaranteed and backed up by state law. And those would be the LED lights, the HVAC projects, the indirect condensing boilers you see on there, that's actually the replacement of the heaters at the Cove, which is something that we needed to do this year anyway, the building advisor, the EOP aeration upgrades, and water reuse project, which is also at the environmental operations. And so that's a total of just over two-point-eight million dollars with guaranteed energy savings per year of just over a hundred-seventy-two thousand dollars. Now, the entire project as a whole, again, is about fourteen-point-eight million dollars, and that is that base project with energy only and energy savings only, leveraged against the entire economic development project of replacing all of our LEDs, all of our sports field lighting with LED lights, and lists all of our parks there, and the wave generator replacement, the artificial turf at Sierra Center and Domingo Pias, and upgrading the utility pedestals at Veterans Park, which that was also one of our planned capital improvement projects for this year. Now, if that is not something that council is interested in doing everything at once, the next two slides are breaking up the project into different components to show you that it is possible to do some of these items and not others, and this one just shows you what it would look like if some of the sports field lightings and some of the turf was done. The next slide shows what it would look like without the wave generator. And that brings the project to right around ten-point-three and ten-point-eight million dollars respectively.
Victoria?
Yes?
These are our costs as the city, the city's cost.
Yes, that, this is the total cost of the project. So where we're at today is looking for final project approval, and if council is comfortable with staff moving in this direction, if you were, or if we adjusted the project at all, if we move forward with the project in any way, our next step would be to secure funding for the project. After that, we would go into construction, which would start at the beginning of the fiscal year and continue on for about the next year.
So when you talk about acquiring funding, what vehicles we talking about? We talking about debt, we talking about bond, what are we talking about?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the financing for the project, we envision would be through the bonding through the municipal property corporation. Those are bonds that are sales tax-based, so basically, we would be pledging our sales tax revenues against the bonds as a surety, but much of the project or the funding would come from the energy savings that we would be realizing here. The other projects have estimated savings in terms of O and M costs, you know, capital replacement costs, those kind of things. Those numbers, while I think the estimates are good, are not as, certainly not as assured as the energy savings, so. So we would be looking at, hopefully, realizing those savings to pay for the rest of the debt service on the bonds, but if not, then Capital Improvement Fund would have to pick up any slack between the two.
So we would be talking about, obviously, we do financing one year, but we're talking bonds over a period, or what?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we'd probably be looking at probably about a fifteen-year financing, maybe twenty, depending on how the number is penciled out, at, you know, hopefully very favorable interest rates in the current environment.
Okay. So we're basically talking about borrowing?
Uh huh.
Okay. To make up what we don't recoup on our own?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's difficult, you know, when you see the savings in the general fund budget in terms of O and M, it's difficult to project or put that against the savings, so David and I would probably have to recommend setting up some sort of a sinking fund or depreciation-type fund to make sure that those funds were there to pay off the bonds, so.
So basically, what you're telling us then is the next step really is to figure out how we would finance this, and at which of the three items, which of the three levels that you've shown, we would finance.
Yeah, the decision point for the council is, one, do you want to proceed with this project at all, and then to what level would you care to go to for, to direct staff to look at the financing options for that particular project? I am recommending the entire thing, and the reason I'm recommending that is because I think it would be extremely difficult for us to budget some of these individual projects in the future to get them done. I think this is a good way for us to get a lot done at one time and see significant improvement in the community and our operation at once. The risk is, of course, you know, if the savings don't, aren't there to generate all of the debt service, and the reason I call that a risk is because we have two large bond issues that will be paid off in fiscal 2021, and that will give the council a lot of financing flexibility for things like, you know, projects that, or street maintenance, things that, you know, have let slip during the economic downturn, so, you know, so I don't want to do something that would reduce your flexibility in the future.
But still, the other side of the coin is, this is an opportunity to catch up on all of that same stuff.
Yeah, you wouldn't see these projects showing up in your budget, you know, for capital replacement or whatever, anytime soon, you know, if you did it all at once, and that's one of the main reasons why I'm recommending doing it.
Comments?
Yeah, a question around floating a bond while we still owe on previous bonds, is that part of this conversation? Am I hearing that?
Well, Mayor Mueller, Council Member Calhoun, I don't think we have any issues in terms of being able to sell the bonds or being able to carry the bonds and pay back the debt service. I think we're in very, very strong financial position and have relatively little debt on the books, and certainly the debt that we do have is scheduled to be paid off here pretty soon, so I'm comfortable with financing a large-scale project, especially when you're looking at energy savings and other savings that will help pay it off. My concern is making sure you have flexibility when the other two bonds are paid off now within a, within a three-year timeframe, to be able to use those funds towards other priorities you deem fit at that time.
Thanks so much.
So, what do you, what else, what do you need from us today, guys?
Well, we could, there's a couple things you could do, Mr. Mayor. You could, you could have us take a look at what the financing would look like for the different options that are presented, so we could run numbers and financings based on two or three different options.
And that's what, that's what I was suggesting, is we really need to look, I think we need to look at the financing for all three options, and then you come back to council for a decision on.
You'll have better numbers and a better idea.
To give you a green light, if we do it, and then what specific, if we do it all or we do part of it.
David, I think that's possible to do, isn't it?
Well, running the numbers at a three-percent bond rate, you're going to pay nine-hundred-thousand dollars on a fifteen-year term for ten million dollars. So if you're doing a fifteen-million-dollar bond, you're looking at about one-point-three, one-point-four million.
Yeah, that's good to know off the top, but again, if we could do it by all three options, we'd be appreciative.
Yeah, and show you which projects.
Exactly. And that needs to come back for council for another discussion.
That won't take long.
Okay.
I did have one quick question. So based on these projects, and I don't know quite how to phrase my question, so forgive me, I'm kind of be thinking out loud while I'm forming this, are these, so, I guess the wave generator replacement is the easiest one for me to talk about, is that like the top of the line, or is it just pretty good for the numbers? I think sometimes we try to get everything that is the best, 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 and custom here in Sierra Vista, and it's not always.
I'm going to ask our consultant, Brandon, to come up and answer. They did, they did all the analysis on all these projects, and I do want to mention one other thing about this project. Schneider Electric, our partner here, is currently working a similar project on Fort Wachukka, of course, on a larger scale, and they bring a lot to the table. They analyzed all these projects for us, they have, you know, subcontractors and vendors that they work with, engineers, et cetera, that we wouldn't necessarily have direct access to except on a project basis as we move forward. By using their expertise and the people and resources they bring to the table, I think we're going to realize a lot of administrative costs, savings going forward as well by going in this direction.
Thank you. Mayor Mueller, members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and it's a fantastic question. The wave generator is a challenging one in that there aren't too many wave generator contractors out there, so that one is hard to give a great feel, but that's what we think is the best solution for that item. What I direct you to is the turf, that's a really easy one to look at, in that there absolutely are cheaper turf options out there than that. A lot of those use rubber infills, there's some components of that that have not been favorable for the environment in the past, so there's that on the low scale, and then on the high scale, there's a handful of other options available. So the turf in particular is right there in the middle, it's a great, great, long-term solution, but it's definitely not the cheap solution and definitely not the high-end Cadillac solution on that, and that's, that's pretty consistent with just about everything we've recommended on there, is this is something that we've brought forth, several options, and hey, here's the pros and cons, going with option A, option B, anywhere on that scale, and then we've kind of left it up to the city to determine what makes most sense for your long-term plan for those facilities.
Thank you.
Of course.
Anything else?
Just want to reiterate that, so that understand, these are the projects that have the best return on investment for this, for this amount of money or for this listing. So there are other projects that may have been considered, but these are the best ones that will return savings.
Energy savings.
Energy, energy savings, so this was all mainly about the energy savings and what we could do.
Well, I'll bring Brandon back up, too. I think that's a really good question, Council Member Calhoun, because, you know, in state law, the beauty of this particular project, specifically as it relates to energy savings, is they have to do the analysis, and on those projects that fit under the definition of state law, if we don't realize the savings necessary to cover the debt service or costs associated with those projects, his firm is on the hook to pay the difference. So that's, so they have a very high incentive to, one, be conservative, and, two, be really good at how they go about, you know, analyzing and recommending these projects to us. Now, when you're talking about turf and you're talking about wave machines and those kind of things, we asked them to do an analysis on it, but those aren't necessarily projects that have, you know, energy savings associated with them. Some of it deals with, well, how much more revenue can the Cove generate by having a wave machine or not having? How much more play or events or, you know, sporting events and those kind of things can we have by using artificial turf, you know, saving water, et cetera, than by just having the grass turf fields than we have now? So those numbers aren't, you know, they're not as firm as the energy savings.
I see. That was helpful, thank you. Thank you.
I, I really don't have much to elaborate that. Councilmember Calhoun, I appreciate the, the question. Chuck put it very well. That's how we really structure this. If you refer to Victoria's slide with the two graphs on there, there's two ends of the spectrum. One is the energy-specific savings, LED lighting inside primarily. Look at something like that, that's got a, a great, great payback compared to something like the wave machine that really doesn't, probably going to go the wrong way on energy savings, but has a revenue generation potential. We're looking to leverage the, the energy savings to help fund more of the economic development, the sports tourism components that don't have the traditional guaranteed energy savings associated with them.
I see.
But he's not on the hook for those.
Right.
Councilmember Calhoun, I will share too. So Schneider Electric was here for days at a time, over weeks and months, to go through all of our building systems. One of the things that we had specifically asked them to look at, because we know it had come up and was important, especially to our Environmental Affairs Commission, was looking at solar at the Environmental Operations Park. And not just there, but also throughout our other buildings. And that was something that just did not pencil out. The cost of the systems, there are no rebates or breaks on them. And the, the energy savings did not balance out in any way.
Just a quick question, if you know, we, we were talking some, how long about the top of the line astroturf, how long does it last for? If you know?
Yeah, I do know. I've, I've learned far more about astroturf in the last couple of months than I'd ever care to admit. But Councilmember Benning, I appreciate the question. The top of the line, even though, I would, I'll use the one that we're talking about.
Okay.
There's two primary components to this, the infill and then the, the turf. Call it the carpet, for lack of a better term. The turf itself has about a 12-year lifespan on that. The infill, which is typically the more pricey component, when you're having to grade everything, fill it with the biodegradable compost, that has a 25-year lifespan on it. So the way that we've structured this is we're looking at it to where over the 25 years, which is about the length we're looking at for the, most of these measures, the infill will, will remain the same. And you'll have to replace the turf once in that, it'll be due again at the end of about 25 years for the second time.
Okay. And that answered our question. We were, if it lasted 10 years and we're paying on it for 16 years, we're paying for something we don't have, so thank you.
Yeah, we don't like to do that, Bill.
So in that same, kind of in that same line, I think. So we need to, by our, the way we budget and plan, to prepare for those new things that we're going to need 12 and 25 years from now. I'm thinking about, now, we had the downturn, which caused us a tremendous problem to do, for instance, replace the wave machine. We just could not afford it at that time. Grass is there, and I realize the whole savings issue, but when the turf wears out, it has to be replaced. And so we, as a community, have to have that always within our sights, that the turf is going, there's no way around replacing it. It must be done, so.
And what you're suggesting is we have a planned obsolescence program where that we know at X year, it's going to be, we're going to have to do so many, such a percentage of.
Exactly.
And the next year, we do another percentage, and the next year, another percentage.
Yeah, that we always keep our.
It's got to be a program.
Improvement again, it's just part of that budget. Okay.
Yeah, Mayor Mueller, Councilmember Calhoun, again, a very good question. We really need to do a better job moving forward if we proceed with this project to make sure we depreciate and save that money for the eventual replacement down the road that we know is going to occur. You're right, when we hit the downturn, yes, we do have capital replacement plans and all that, but when the money wasn't there to do it, it wasn't there to do it. And then we end up in a deferred, you know, maintenance situation, scrambling to catch up. You're, you're seeing large-ticket items come in the budget, you know. This is a way that we can overcome a lot of, you know, the problems, you know, we incurred over the last 10 years and, and do it, you know, all at once, so. And then, you know, moving forward, we just need to make sure we set aside enough to pay for it in the future.
Okay?
Yes.
Anything else? So thank you.
Very much.
Okay, so that is Schneider Electric presentation. We appreciate that. Looking forward to working with you folks. Transit efficiency recommendations. Sharon, wow us.
I hope so, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this presentation's going to draw to a close our previous strategic plan item to evaluate the efficiency of Vista Transit and to focus service on those who truly need it. So have some results to share with you. First off, I'd like to thank Mike Norman, Transit Administrator. He's here and he's available to answer any questions as well. A lot of this is a direct result of his work. So if you have questions on timing or anything like that, I'm sure he'll be able to answer those for you. All right, so just real quick, some of the operating metrics that we're looking at, just so you know where we are as a base. The bottom four are probably the most important to our discussion today as we talk about operating more efficiently. You can see there our operating budget. And in addition to that, Fairback, or Fairbox revenue, the FTA grant and the general fund. So most important thing to realize out of this is the majority of the operating budget is derived from FTA grants. With a fairly significant general fund subsidy, Fairbox revenue is a very small percentage of that.
Is that FTA grant, is that an annual thing that's automatic? Or do you have to apply for that every year and hope to get it?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Calhoun, it's fairly automatic. We do have to apply every year. We have to meet metrics associated with it. If our grant performance were to slip, if we were not doing the things we needed to do, then we could be in jeopardy of losing that grant. But we've got people like Mike and Yolanda Velasquez, who are very good at what they do and keep us in full compliance. So I'm fairly confident that that grant will be around this day. All right, so just briefly, some of the previous efficiency measures we'd implemented at Vista Transit. One, we looked at smaller, more efficient buses. A number of years ago, we used to have what was called the International Bus, which was quite large and frankly, most of the time, not very full. So all the Internationals are now out of our fleet. Primarily, we use what's called an Arboc Spirit of Freedom Bus. That's an 18-passenger bus for the fixed routes. And then we use another bus on our paratransit routes. Actually, we are in the process of purchasing those buses right now. They're going to be a nine-passenger bus with two wheelchair spaces. So instead of even using a fixed route bus, we're going to have a smaller bus on a standard axle gasoline engine to run the paratransit. So right sizing our fleet to meet the needs of our customers. And so those are changes we've already made or are already in progress right now. A number of years ago, due to some staffing challenges, we hit combined routes four and five. Those are, I'll call them some of our central routes. They run through the center services. The city complex here is on one of those routes. And those were our lowest ridership routes at the time. So when we had some staffing challenges, it made sense to combine those. And because we were seeing monetary savings, we have never combined them. That was probably about three years ago that we combined them, and we have left them combined. But there has been some challenges with that because that is essentially on a one-hour loop, whereas our other routes are on half-hour loops. If you're on Route four or five, it is a one-hour loop. And the timeline, it's also reduced. It runs eight hours a day, whereas our others run 11 hours a day. So we have gotten some feedback from passengers that they wish that this route ran longer and also was on a more frequent loop. We reduced the paratransit route a number of years ago. We used to have three paratransit routes. We cut that back to two, just to realize some savings there. It does mean that sometimes our paratransit passengers have to wait a little bit longer, but the timelines are still well within the FTA guidelines. And then also, we had done a study to establish a unique ridership of Vista Transit. That helps us zone in on items like what is the correct size bus for us? How many unique riders do we have in the system? And what size facilities do we need as a result?
Sharon, excuse me for interrupting again, but could you describe what a unique rider is?
Sure. Most of our reporting is done in passenger trips. So when somebody gets on the bus, we don't necessarily record that as a unique person. So from start to finish, a unique person. If they get on the bus multiple times per day, then each time, that is a passenger trip. We don't have a way to track that it is one person who maybe gets on the bus five times. Each time they get on the bus, they are counted. So the question had come up a while ago, do we have a way to measure unique riders? We did not, but we were able to bring on a consultant who, through a survey process and mathematical methods, was able to determine the number of unique riders.
Do you have that number?
Yes, that number was estimated at 517 per week. Unique riders per week. And then there had been an additional study done in 2018 by a company called AECOM on further enhancing efficiency recommendations for Vista Transit. And these were some of the things that AECOM had come up with. I already mentioned routes four and five, expanding routes four and five to match a schedule on the other routes. The thinking there that that would bring additional passengers into the system because we were hearing that frustration from people that they were having difficulty connecting. Interline the routes to allow for more one-seat rides. So rather than having to go back to the transit center, let's say if they were on the West Side Route. Currently, they have to go back to the Transit Center and then over to the shopping areas. That's where a lot of our passengers are going. So interlining the routes that they can go directly from their origin to their destination. Introduce more direct routes along the same lines. Use main streets to reduce travel times. We were going down a lot of side streets to try to pick up passengers in areas, but the recommendation was actually to stick more to the main streets when we could to help cut down travel times through the city. And then also to take a look at our routing and to revise our routing to reduce travel in areas with minimal demand. And then this is, to me, one of the keys, is to create overlapping routes. It key points to reduce dependency on transfers at the Transit Center. Currently, under the current routing system, the Vista Transit Center is the only place you can transfer. So again, if you are going from the West Side and you want to go to Walmart, you have to go to the Vista Transit Center first, get on a different bus, which then takes you to the shopping district. So it's kind of like a wheel, if you think of it, with the Transit Center in the middle and all the spokes coming out from there. So this is what our existing route system looks like. I talked about combined routes four and five. Those are the orange and the brown routes in the middle. And after a couple of months of hard work by Mike, this is the proposed route. So a few key points here, and then I have another slide that will show you the differences right after this one. But a few key points is this reduces to three routes from five. So currently, we operate five with a combined route, four and five, and this cuts it down to three. The three routes would op, or operate at 60-minute intervals. So rather than 30 minutes, they would be on 60-minute loops through the city. And all three routes would operate 11 hours per day. And I will note also that this does, and I'll explain it in a little more depth, efficiency recommendation that I just went over.
See, they all overlap, I think, near Wal, is it Walmart?
Walmart will actually be serviced now on all three routes. Yep, and Cochise College is on two of them. So I had mentioned that I would highlight the differences. Here they are. The red is the areas that were cut and the green is what has been added. So you see, the biggest cut area is going down Coronado and Avenue de Cochise. What we found is that we had a lot of dead miles on that route. We were going through areas that we frankly just did not have a lot of pickups. Those were some of our lowest utilized bus stops was along Coronado and Avenue de Cochise. And really, what we were trying to do was trying to get to the mall. So now, instead, we are going down 92 and hopefully picking up some passengers from those commercial areas along 92 and getting to the mall much more efficiently than going down Coronado Drive at 35 miles an hour, just not to pick up any passengers. I would highlight some of the areas that we will now be getting to, that we were not able to get to before. The big one is all the way into the hospital, the Canyon Vista Medical Center. Before, on the 30-minute loop, as far as we could make it, was the Juvenile Detention Center. And that was a big criticism. A lot of people use our system to access medical services. So dropping them off on the opposite side of Colonia de Salud from the hospital left them a distance to walk, at least if they were on the fixed route system. So now, our fixed route system will go all the way into the parking lot for the Canyon Vista Medical Center. Some other notable additions, Buena High School. Buena High School has never been on our route. So now we are going to be able to make it up to the high school. Obviously, the high school has their own bus service, but it's during set times of the day. If the students have a reduced schedule, if they need to stay after school for some reason and can't take the activities bus, this will provide them for, with another option. Or if they miss the bus, just saying, that happens sometimes. This will provide them with another option. We've also added some areas along campus and Industry Drive. We have a few large employers there that we will be able to get closer to their businesses. A lot of the rest of the green and red that you see is simply rerouting of the buses. So rather than going down a portion of Frye Boulevard, we're going to be going around the bypass. Again, that's to stick us within the 60-minute loops that we were going for on this route. And then we did some rerouting on the West Side of Sierra Vista, as well. As you can see, there's some red there, but there's also some green where we developed a new route over on that side. So bottom line, cost implications of this. On top there, you'll see the existing routes, one through five. Our annual operating cost is just shy of $400,000 per year. And under this new routing plan, we have routes A, B, and C. And we were able to drop our operating cost by about $100,000 per year. We are driving less miles per day and less hours per day, but getting to more areas of the city.
It's what you call efficiency, right?
That's what you call efficiency. So just a few of the considerations, kind of in conclusion. We are reducing the number of routes from five to three. However, all routes will now operate from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. We won't have two that are running at odd times. We will be able to provide multiple transfer points. As I said, Walmart is the big one. If you want to go from the West Side of town to Walmart, you will now be able to get there without going through the Transit Center. Yes, Councilwoman Calhoun?
Yes, thank you. Will it take you an hour to get to Walmart?
No. That's the other fun aspect of this, is in some cases, you're actually going to get places faster. The big public concern with this is going to be waiting. Before, it only took me half an hour, now it's going to take me an hour. That's not really true in a lot of cases because you will go there more directly. So if you hop on a bus on the West End, you'll be able to get to Walmart actually as quickly, in some cases, more quickly. It depends where you get on the bus.
So then it takes an hour for it to get back to where you got on?
Correct. It's because it's.
For the most part.
Yeah, it's because it's going through, you know, Walmart and some of the other shopping centers. centers as well. Walmart isn't the only thing on the route. But depending on your destination, you will be able to get to some of them more quickly. The Cochise College one is actually a really important one because people will be able to make transfers there, and there is a bus that will go from Cochise College down south to the mall. One of the thinking, it was very good thought that Mike had, is students from Buena High School and from Cochise College are some of our more likely people to have jobs at the mall. So being able to provide them with an opportunity to transfer at that location to a bus that will take them down to the mall where they may be employed is definitely a benefit. I did note also, we're expanding the service area to a few key new locations. We do have the potential savings to the general fund. There are some areas, as I pointed out, that will no longer be served. However, I would put the caveat on that, that they weren't some of our highest ridership locations anyhow. I think the benefits far of the added stops far outweigh what we're losing in this case. And that is it.
You didn't mention any weekend service to the installation?
Yes. We did not have route six and seven on here, the weekend route and the post route, because we are not recommending any changes to those at this time. We looked primarily at our weekday fixed route system.
For that bus, I've been curious about this and always forget to ask, for that bus to, from Fort Huachuca to places-
Mm-hmm.
-the mall, other locations?
Mm-hmm.
Can civilians hop that bus anywhere along the route?
I believe so.
I haven't looked at that.
If they got the money, yeah. You got the money, honey, we got the ride.
Well, that's my, that was my question, really.
Yes, they can. Off-post. To get on-post, they have to have the pass.
But they can catch the bus somewhere, off-post, go somewhere on the bus and get off again before it goes back onto post?
Yes. Yes, they can.
Okay, that was, and those are clearly marked. I haven't really looked at that, but it just came to mind to ask you about it. So that'll be on the route marking. When I say civilians, I mean people off-post. They can get on the bus somewhere, ride it somewhere, get off of it before it's on and off-post.
Yes, Councilmember Calhoun, we actually have two routes that operate on Saturday. The one is the one that operates on-post and comes into town. Then we have another route, Route Six, that serves the west end and the shopping areas and the mall. So there are opportunities for people that are not on-post-
On the weekend.
...to use the bus on Saturday as well.
That's great, thank you.
I just want to add, thank you, Mike, for all the hard work. I know you met with bus riders. I saw you getting their feedback before you came up with this final plan, and I think it looks really good.
Any comments? Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Sharon. Appreciate it.
Yep.
We'll now move on to item number D. This is Calhoun.
Oh, that's the next step, next step for the transit?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I believe we will go ahead and plan on implementing this with the start of the fiscal year, so that'll give us enough time. And then, of course, we'll need to put together a public information program-
Root maps and all the other kinds of stuff.
...to educate everybody, and we'll be working with Ms. Hector's group on that. So, but I think we have enough time to safely implement.
And we don't, we don't need a special vote to approve?
No, I think this is operational in nature, so we need your feedback, obviously.
Okay, all right. Anything else on this item? Okay, next we'll move to item D, Mrs. Calhoun.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I requested this item to be put on the agenda. I'd like to give a few comments as to why. We recognize that the City of Nogales recently passed an ordinance against the use of this concertina or razor wire on the border wall structure. We appreciate that the City of Tucson recently passed a resolution in support of the Nogales ordinance. I'm using the word "we" loosely. Right. I'll continue with "we" just in case some of this goes forward, but of course, other council members may object to any of these comments. We believe that the wire gives the appearance, let me go to "I," I believe that the wires give the appearance of a prison or concentration camp in the communities where they may be used specifically, Nogales. And I'm saying that from pictures I've seen, not from having seen them in person. I'm concerned that the wires, especially in a business district or populated areas, that they're unsightly, and they can discourage members of the community from approaching the area. I'm deeply disturbed that the wires show blatant disregard for the life or disfigurement of anyone who comes in contact with it, either by attempting to cross the barrier or who happen to be walking around it. And I firmly affirm that it's outside the spirit of the people of the United States of America to use this kind of method against people who are seeking asylum in our country or escaping from offensive situations in their countries. I believe I withdrew in my mind that last comment, but I do believe that the police department in Nogales and the Border Patrol are able to contain issues related to border crossers without the use of that concertina wire. So I included a sample of a resolution-
Draft resolution.
Draft of a resolution that is simply that, simply a draft of how it could look. Although, and some of those, that wording was taken directly from, I'm looking for my copy of the Nogales resolution, but some of the wording in that sample came from the Nogales resolution. And my, so my request is that we support Nogales in this matter and support their resolution for the United States government to remove the wire from, at least the lower wires from the border wall. Where did I do with my copy of the resolution? So we're open for?
I just want to, want to talk about a couple administrative things to start with.
Okay.
So people understand, supposedly the new folks. Basically, first of, I guess I'd ask you a question. Were you contacted by the City of Nogales for a supporting resolution?
I was not.
Okay.
I did contact them for a copy of their resolution.
Yeah, I got it, but okay. Normally, what happens when we do these non-binding proclamations, the guidelines are normally is if it's Nogales or Douglas, whoever has an issue, they would normally contact us officially and say, hey, we're getting ready to do this. We want to get a sense of support. We think this is important. And the reason they do that is because timeliness has an impact. And my understanding is that on the 6th of February, which is now three weeks ago, it was on their agenda. We haven't been able to verify that it was actually passed, but I'm assuming it passed. So it's already not timely to be having an effect on the federal government. And so I will tell you that when I watch my good friend, Ed Guarino, who is the mayor of Nogales, he, when he was vice mayor years ago, I was, I was Mayor Protem, we were on the Seago Council together. We worked very well together. He's a good guy. He's very concerned about his community. I think there's a genuine concern. But when I saw him on TV, I could tell there was a level of frustration in dealing with the federal government. And I take that akin to our, our local issues when, in 9/11, we had to immediately change access to the front gate. And now the front gate is no longer the front gate, it's the side gate, and we have another commercial gate. And we went through a series of local leadership, and I'm talking at general officer level, I'm talking about below, that were getting conflicting guidance from their federal handlers, and they couldn't make good decisions to ensure that we kept the current, the old front gate as the main gate of the post, which was easily doable if they, if they'd taken some action and they'd been articulate. So I see this, and that, in fact, impacted our commercial ability in the west end. Okay? So I can empathize with Mayor Guarino and the council. And normally, if they would have wanted the assistance, they would have reached out to do that, and we worked on other issues, transportation issues and others with, with the groups in the past on these proclamations. So to be effective, they have to be timely. So we're already three weeks late. Okay? And they have to be focused. They have to be focused on a specific, the specific issue. And normally, it's best that we are asked by that city to participate. And the reason I say that is because I learned Saturday night at a, at a political function that down in Douglas, the former Mayor Protem is going to run in the, in the recall election against the mayor. And one of his, one of his points for political purpose is he's going to be pro-concertina wire. So then we get into the ideas, are we interfering with the, the internal operations of cities or not? All that has to be taken into consideration. And the other thing, the other thing that's critical about the proclamations, proclamations don't mean a thing if it's, if it's, comes out and we vote, seven people vote, and it passes 4-3, 5-2 may be a little more effective, 6-1 would be more effective, obviously 7-0. So these are issues that we really need to take in consideration on, on the, on this issue. So I just, I just throw that all out for your consideration right now and for you to mull over and think about. But, and I'm not, I'm not ready to say that I'm opposed to this right now, but I want, I'd like to hear what everybody else thinks. And is, is this an effective way to assist one of our cities, and will be perceived by that, both in Douglas and in Nogales? And that's part of my concern.
Thank you. Part of my concern is, first of all, let me address focused. You know, I'm looking at my documents here. My focus in, in making this request is strictly about concertina razor wire and not about the wall. So it's, the focus is on the wire, and I think the other statements I made was clear on that. Also, this, to me, is important as a citizen of this community, speaking to the citizens of Nogales, or at least to the city council of Nogales, who I believe are acting in what they consider it was the best interest of their community. And it, this, this goes beyond, for me, politics. It's about our belief around the use of, my belief around the use of what I consider an inhumane way of treating the, the community of Nogales. It, to me, it shows support to the document that Nogales wrote, that we understand what you're saying and we agree with what you're saying. Now, the piece about it going to the federal government, I'm not real clear about that. My, my focus was not on so much that we also are speaking to the federal government and saying, take down that wire, but we are speaking to the citizens and the city council of Nogales and showing a neighborly way of saying, you know, we realize what you're suffering with or dealing with, and we support what you, what you feel.
But, and I understand your intent, but what I'm, what I'm suggesting to you is that it can be taken, the fact that we oppose federal action along the fence. My concern is, and I think, I think Ed, just from looking at Ed's eyes in that telecast, is as the new mayor, he had not had the opportunity, I'm sure, to consult with the Border Patrol or ICE or whoever it was that made that determination ahead of time, because he hadn't been in office long enough to establish that relationship where he could, they could call each other and one guy could say, hey, this is coming, and the mayor could say, hey, you knucklehead, this is what it's going to cost. You really need to, you really need, and if they agreed, then, then it's up to Ed to be able to go to the next higher person and say, hey, this is a stupid decision. And, and that's, and that's the kind of thing that after the fact, it's hard to fix.
That does not compute. I, I would like to say, Mr. Mayor, you know, we're probably approaching this from, well, we are, from our experiences and our knowledge. Mine is strictly on this level of concern about the wire. Nothing to do with the politics of it, nothing to do with whether the mayor should have-
I don't see how you can, I don't see how you can separate the two. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I can, because I think it has to do more with what my beliefs are about what's important. And the mayor maybe could have, if he had had a better opportunity, done something, but the fact-
Well, I don't think he was given the opportunity, is my guess. And that's part, and that's part of the shame of it.
Maybe I should stop and give other people an opportunity to speak if they care to. This is my proposal.
Anybody? Yes, ma'am?
You know, I think for me, the biggest piece is that we were not actually asked by Nogales to do so. And quite honestly, if somebody else decided to make a proclamation about Sierra Vista without us asking them to do so, I would be a little bit angry about that.
And, and I would say, I know Ed, Ed would call me if he had that issue, I'm sure. He knows we've worked together in the past. So Mayor Guarino, and I haven't called him on this issue yet because I wanted to hear what everybody said, but I can, I can certainly call him.
I would like to hear their feedback in Nogales. And my other, kind of addressed it already, was the concertina wire that's in Cochise County that isn't addressed in this proclamation, that it's in Naco and in Douglas. It's not just in Nogales, it's in various places along the Arizona-Mexico border. And I don't know, I would, I would think that that's also an omission to not mention Naco, even though there's, they don't, they're not incorporated, they don't have a city council or anything that could have taken a resolution. I don't know whether Bisbee City Council has talked about this in there. I haven't looked. This kind of came up later. I'm not aware that Bisbee City Council has looked in, or has addressed or adopted any kind of resolution regarding concertina wire use in Naco. But that's certainly a much closer community where this is affecting us and our citizens.
Let me just ask, is the concertina wire in Naco all the way down to the ground, the way it is in the business district of Nogales?
I believe so.
And, and you know, this, again, I have to say, I, the, the business of having to be asked by another community for permission to support something that they've done, that's new to me. I didn't realize-
We don't have to be asked. It's the normal situation that's, that's what happens.
I, I might throw out, for the purpose of discussion, that that may have been the way it was in the past, that maybe things are different now, that the world is changing. And if we chose to speak up about something, and Sarah, I appreciate what you added, and perhaps this maybe could be an issue that's more related across the board to the wire, rather than specifically to the Nogales area. The wire is the issue for me, and not only because Tucson also joined Nogales, but because it's a bigger issue. You know, today, it's Nogales. Yesterday, it was Naco. Who knows what next week will hold? And if we don't have a sense of this issue, how it could be affecting people's lives every day, then, you know, no, it's not in our community, but it is around our community. So whatever questions I think the council has, and forgive me for putting my back to you, maybe the bigger issue is getting answers to those questions and deciding as a council how we perceive these issues that are going on around us. Today, it's concertina wire. Tomorrow, it could be something in the school system that is affecting our citizens and the children in our community. So that's why it's important, and that's why I brought it to the council.
William, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, sir, not at this moment.
Rachel?
No, I, I think that, Gwen, I appreciate and I understand your position on this. For me, I think this very subject points out a larger issue, and that is us working in lockstep together, in the county, in the state, to have effective communication with the federal government. It's actually something I wrote down in my notes for strategic planning. So I feel like it's important that we do that, to me personally. um, resolutions lack action on, on the part of, of these types of subjects. So I, I'm much more in favor of us figuring out a system of working together to talk to those in Washington who don't quite understand what it's like to live in our county, how it's affecting those in our county. So getting our state officials, getting our county officials, getting our local officials together in the same room and discussing those, so there's a concerted message in lockstep. So that's my opinion on this issue.
Your use of lockstep is, is a little awkward. Um, I, I hear that there is no consensus for following through on this. And, uh, I'm disappointed that, uh, we don't have a better sense of, um, what's happening to our, to the community of Nogales and Naco. Um, that we're not better connected to that, but I'll, I'll, uh-
Before you go to non-consensus, we need to, Carolyn or, or Christine?
I, I just don't, I, I don't know how I feel about, um, making a proclamation, speaking for the entire city when not one person has come to me requesting that we do that. Um, but I, I know there's a lot of us feel the way you do.
Right, and you know, that's, that's an interesting point, too, because very few people in the community all actually knew that we were going to have this conversation today. So, uh, but they, anybody could have come forward to say, what are you guys going to do about this? Um, I, I'm doing it. I know, um, I have a sense of, although very few people, uh, two to three have talked to me about this, specifically, what are we going to do? But I haven't had, uh, a run on people coming to say, you guys have, you guys have to do something. Uh, this is, for me, a point of leadership and a point of, uh, sticking to what those people who elected me, that I know who elected me, uh, know of me and expect of me. And it's what I expect of myself. So, uh, that's my point, um, bringing it to the council was my way of-
Christine, did you want to make any comments? Okay. So what I'm getting here, and, and you tell me if I'm wrong, I'm getting the fact that appears that we do not have a consensus to have a resolution on Thursday's meeting. Am I off base?
No, sir.
Okay, so, that, thank you for bringing up the discussion. I think it was well worth having.
I do, too.
And making, making sure everybody understands where we stand and, and how things have operated in the past, and maybe they need to change in the future. That's, those are all good discussion items. Okay, so that is item, get back to the schedule, that is item, uh, D. Uh, reports of trips, recent trips, future meetings, et cetera. Anything there for the council members? Okay.
I do have-
Ma'am?
Future trips.
Trips?
It's before our next meeting. Don't we have our, oh, no, we have one more meeting before we go to Washington?
Yeah.
No?
Oh.
They're going to watch tonight, right?
No, I don't think that we do.
Well, Thursday's meeting.
Oh, yeah, Thursday, but this is the one we talk about. So we're, uh, three of us are going to-
League of Cities, okay.
Four of us, counting, uh, Victoria.
Okay, Board and Commission Liaison Updates. Oh, Chuck, sorry.
Mayor, I just, uh, on trips, uh, I, I know it was, uh, announced that I would be testifying in Phoenix in the adjudication on the fourth, and that is now being rescheduled, and it looks like it will be the week of the eleventh, possibly the sixth or seventh, so, uh, there's been some issues, uh, that have been, you know, delaying the process. So just wanted to let, let you know that and clarify that for you.
Okay, Board and Commission Liaison Updates, going once, going twice?
Oh, oh, yeah, sorry. Um, Youth Arts Festival got rescheduled due to weather. It wasn't this Saturday. They moved it to March thirtieth.
Come on in.
Ma'am?
Oh, I want to share a sad update from the Airport Commission that, um, a long time he termed out of the Airport Commission. He was our former chairman past. John Voishen passed away unexpectedly this past week, and our commission is very saddened to hear. I know he's on Environmental Affairs Commission, uh, currently, but we're so sad to hear of his passing. He's-
I think he's turfed out now in Environmental Affairs.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, he, really great guy. He was dedicated to our city, and he'll be missed.
Okay, anybody else?
Mine goes, mine goes with G, Mr. McHerson, I'll wait.
Okay, well, we're on G, go for it. Future discussion items and council requests.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Culture, uh, Culture Diversity Commission met last night, and Councilwoman Calhoun was gracious enough to join us, thank you. One of the things we've noticed, and we, we've been talking about doing it, is sitting down, having either a work session or a retreat to talk about commissions, the purpose of commissions, and where we're going with commissions, and I'd just like to bring that up again, that I think it's something sooner rather than later we should do. Um, talking to my, my, uh, commission chair last night, she had no clue really what her purpose was. And that was saddening when they didn't have an outline, and she has some legitimate backup for it, but I think in, in general and in a whole, coming up with, here's what we want from you, and here's what they expect from us, is a good thing.
And I would agree with you, and I think what I've said previously is I'd like each one of you to come see me one-on-one and basically say, here's what I think about boards and commissions in general, or my specific commissions, and here's how we can make them more effective. And that's got to be the focus. How do we make them more effective? And then we sit down, and we'll talk about that, and we probably need to go sit down with staff and say, okay, here's the issues that are coming up. We're, we're not have, we don't have enough people that are there for quorum calls. We don't have staff issues, whatever, whatever it may be. And then we, we need to come up with a, let the staff mull it over and come up with recommendations to us on boards and because some of the commissions may be more effective-
As a board.
As a board.
I agree.
And we need to be, we need to be open to that prospect. It's not making them any less more important to the city on the input, or doesn't diminish the public input, which is important in those processes, but we need to find a way to be more efficient. Mr.?
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, in your strategic planning, um, session last week, you set a goal of improving community engagement, and one of the action items that staff came up with underneath that was, uh, a review of, and so that would actually then be included in your strategic plan.
Now, thank you, Chuck. And I agree, the comment sooner than later, I would like you guys to come in to me as you can and, and talk to me, but I'd really like to have something at the start of the fiscal year, if possible. I mean, we went through, we went through this last year, two years ago, and we just, it was just, it seemed like it took off forever.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Could I ask, what would be the reason for us to meet with you privately, rather than as a group?
Well, I want to, I want to know, I want to know what your ideas are, so I can steal them.
My question, my question is, why we could have-
Well, the thing is, and we can, we can do that as a group later, but I want to get a basic framework. Because right now, what I'm hearing from everybody, we're all over the place. And I want to get an idea of what may be doable, and from the doable, we can then expand that.
I, I, I truly don't understand that either, but, uh, there's no point in, in, um, trying to do it any differently at this point.
Well, we tried it, we tried it the other way, we went nowhere.
No, we had three people who met. We came out with a document from that.
That wasn't acceptable to the rest of the council.
We voted on it. We accepted it.
You're talking about the policies and procedures manual. We're talking about changes to the commissions.
Not the changes to the commissions. You're talking about policies and procedures.
No, I'm talking about the commission. We have a booklet that we gave out.
Yeah, we, we did evolve season procedures manual, but we're talking, I'm talking about reorganizing the commissions. Where you had the three members where Craig had a plan, I don't remember, he thought, he had that fancy name on the plan. I don't remember what it was. It was so fancy. But it didn't go anywhere. It didn't, practically, it, it didn't, it made no change.
But why didn't it?
Well, because the rest of the coun, the rest of the council didn't support it.
There, that's my point.
Yeah.
So I don't see a reason-
The thing is, well, the thing is, I'm not going to do this by myself. Believe me, you should know that by now.
No, 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 I'm not even suspecting that. What I'm saying is, I don't know what William or Christine or Carolyn think about commissions.
Well, they can talk to you about it.
So if we, if we just had a meeting, a work session where we talked about the commissions, wouldn't that be more efficient than us each having to speak to you privately?
I think that, I think that's part of the process, though, is I want to get a basic idea where everybody is, and from the basic idea where everybody is, we can have a public meeting. I don't have a problem with everybody coming out and laying out, laying out, this should be a board, and this should be a commission, and this, this is not the right mission for this group. It's a better mission for over here, all those type of discussions. I don't have a problem with it. But I mean, we need to do some preliminary homework first, and that's why I'm suggesting you come talk to me individually. I'm not making decisions for the council on my own. I haven't done that, I haven't done that in twenty years.
That never came up as part of the conversation. That, that was never a suspicion. I'm just talking about the efficiency of us all sitting together to go over the issue rather than individually, because I'd like to hear what everybody has to say. So, uh, start with the way you want to do it.
Yeah, I'm, again, I've tried to do, it didn't work, in my opinion, it didn't work last time. So I'm trying to do something different. If mine doesn't work, we'll do it, we'll do it another way, but we're, basically, we'll get to the goal.
Let me say, what did it work? What did it work is the way everybody else wanted it to come out. What worked was what came out of it, and that's what happened. We came out with, we didn't change the way the commissions are working. Now, what you're saying is that wasn't what somebody wanted to see happen.
Well, my, my, my understanding is that was not the consensus of the council, otherwise we would have made more reforms.
We didn't need to make a reform because there was no discussion, there was no agreement to make reforms. That's what we brought back to the council.
Well, I, I have to have a different memory. Have to have a different memory.
Alright.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have a, it's related to commissions, but the discussion item that was also brought up at Airport Commission that, um, they do not like that we do not take minutes. We only have the audio minute system.
Thank you for bringing that up.
And we've heard that at multiple commissions, and I, I understand that that system or method of minute-taking in commissions was put into place by council. I'm not sure.
We did.
But for a future discussion item, they don't like it.
Okay, but again, I just, just, Jill jogged my memory a little bit. Uh, this was, didn't we talk about this at the, at the strategic planning, at the retreat?
A little bit, yes. That was built into the commission policy and procedure manual because there was an express interest in reducing the amount of staff support because staff members were spending a lot of time typing minutes. We don't have a lot of commissions where the commissioners actually type the minutes. So it was put in the manual that we would try the recording, but when we discussed it, it was an experiment. And I agree, I don't think it's been a very positive one.
And I did send Jill a template. We talked about using a template at the retreat, and we sent one out that could possibly be used. So, but that's, that's all for that big discussion we have on commissions.
Future, future, future discussion item on administration of commissions.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Alright. Anything else? Saying nothing else before?
There was something else.
We'll, we'll end a couple minutes early.